On that note, I think we should start today's session. So, welcome all, welcome to both Cyber Fundamentals cohorts, the Law Enforcement cohort and the Lawyers cohort. Thank you for joining us for our final and third Zoom case study session. Welcome all. Before I introduce our first presentation, I thought I'd just briefly run through what we expect. Most of us should have covered by this point in this course, just to sort of introduce this case study session. So, to begin, the lawyers cohort will have progressed to the preparing for court session. So, we've moved through the sort of investigation phase and now we're heading into the courtroom. Whereas the law enforcement class at this point is sort of having a much closer look at computer and mobile forensics. Now, the ultimate goal of all of these case study sessions is for everyone to gain a shared understanding of how digital evidence issues are integral to the investigation and prosecution of these offenses. So, bringing everyone together, the breakout rooms, sharing what we've learned, having that discussion, that's what this is all about. So, as we outlined in the very first session, by understanding how the conduct of an investigation bears on the prosecution's case and the admissibility of evidence in the courtroom, we're hoping this will do a few things, or four things actually. The first is, we hope that it gives you visibility over the challenges that others are dealing with. Second, we hope that it will help to identify where there's more collaborative opportunities that would help strengthen law and justice in the Pacific. Thirdly, well, thirdly, that's why we're really pleased to hear from FICAC today on how investigators and prosecutors handle digital evidence in their organization and some of the ways that they work together to present the outcomes of their investigations effectively in the courtroom. And then after that, fourthly, we're going to hear from Emma Java from the CDPP on the key considerations for prosecutors to keep in mind when preparing to induce digital evidence. Before we introduce our presenters, we've just had a few new participants join us, so welcome. But I just thought I'd give you an opportunity if there's any questions at this point before I introduce our first presentation. That is all good. Great. Well, before I hand over to our first speakers for today, I just want to say we're delighted to have the Fujian Independent Commission Against Corruption join us today to discuss how digital evidence is managed in the course of their work. I'm pleased to introduce Mr. Frank Tora, who is a chief investigator at FICAC. Frank will continue the discussion on some of the themes we've been considering in our case study with respect to the investigation of corruption offenses. In particular, in his presentation today, he will cover how investigators and prosecutors work together to progress cases at FICAC and how some of the technical aspects of digital evidence being induced in FICAC cases is effectively communicated to the judiciary. Joining Frank is Mr. Sam Savarmanara, who is a senior state counsel at FICAC. He will be assisting Frank to answer questions at the end of session. So, I now want to hand over to you, Frank and Sam, to begin your presentation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Nicholas, thank you again for giving us the opportunity to, FICAC, to present what we have experienced in digital forensics. And to begin with, I'm Mr. Frank Tora. I've been with FICAC for the last 10 years. Five years as a financial investigator and the other five years now as a digital forensic investigator, supporting investigations and prosecutors in cases involving digital evidence at FICAC. And let my colleague, Mr. Sam, introduce.
Thank you. I'm Mr. Sam Savar Mira Mira. It's called me Sam. I've been with FICAC for nine years now, doing prosecution in the White Collar Division and including cyber. Thank you.
So, we just, our slides are on the screen at the moment. It's total approximately 18 slides. We are mindful of time, so we'll just try to run with the participants on some of the concepts that we at FICAC had experienced and some of the previous cases that we attended with digital evidence. Thank you. Next slide please. So, this is the scope of our presentation. I'll just briefly introduce how the digital forensic unit was set up in FICAC, the history, the overview, and some of the rules of evidence that you need to consider as investigators or as digital forensic investigators in your respective work. Past cases, we've just, we'll be sharing four cases that we've successfully taken to court, digital evidence, recommendation and the conclusion. So, to begin with, digital forensic for us in FICAC was historically assigned to our IT department, our information technology department. And recently, this has approached and now it has been assigned or shifted to the investigation department. So, in the last several years, when FICAC was established in the year 2007, until mid-2018, our IT officers had been quite in support to us investigators. They have been going to collect evidence, extracting evidence from mobile phones, computers and emails for us investigators. So, they've been doing that apart from their normal IT work of maintaining our network infrastructure and our overall IT architecture. Then, moving on, in the year mid-2018, sorry, next slide please. Around mid-2018, our digital forensic lab was fully set up with trained officers. So, it's only two of us, myself and another colleague of mine in digital forensic. And our standing operating procedure was adopted from Malaysia's Cyber Security Agency of Ministry of Science, Technology and Innovation. So, that is basically an overall picture of digital forensic lab, which is also publicly available, you know, and a report. So, some of the tools that we use to extract digital evidence and devices that we have been conducting for the last four and five years. Next slide please. And I'd just like to briefly state the four principles of the Association of Chief Police Officers guideline that I'm sure all of you have been aware of. We at FICAC also strictly follow these principles that principle one, no no action by law enforcement agencies or the agents should change that in court, especially when you seizing from the site or from the scene of crime. Make sure that a trained person or authorized examiner has access to seizing device. Principle two, when it's absolutely necessary to do so, a trained officer to access it and able to explain the indications in court. And three, an audit trail. Make sure that, from our experience, documented. As a police officers or as law enforcement officers, this is the most crucial part, where you document everything, you write down the device that we've seized from the site, make and model the condition. Because at the end of the day, the evidence will be presented in court. So, that is principle three and principle four is the overall case officer that is in charge of the matter has to ensure that all four principles are followed during an investigation involving electronic evidence. Excellent. So, these are basically our roles as digital forensic investigators. We advise our colleagues, investigators on the reliability and availability of digital evidence. We work with them, going out for field search and seizures from various places, offices, banks and wherever we need to acquire that respective electronic evidence. We also prepare our search warrants. We have powers similar to our counterparts in the police, we prepare search warrants. And we advise the investigators for need to which exact wording or which clauses to put in search warrant that is relevant to any particular case. And also, we provide statements. Once we've analyzed, extracted the device, we reported our findings to our investigators and to the prosecutors, we provide the written reports and our statements for court purposes. Next slide please. So, these are the common types of devices that we seize, just like any other law enforcement agency. I'm sure in your various countries, in your various regions, it would be phones, laptops, personal computers, emails, call records from the telecommunications provider, CCTVs, hard drives and USBs. So, for us, in fact, these are the most common type of digital devices that we collect safely, secure and extract and analyze our findings to the team. So, from these devices, these are the try to identify the digital trail or the timeline of events. So, before I, once a case is assigned to us or our support is needed, we ask our investigators, okay, what is the background of this case? What are the facts of this case? So that, once we've gotten the digital evidence, we know what exactly to look for. So, the PC laptop image, I'm sure you're all aware, image is an exact copy or a clone of a hard drive or computer laptop. We analyze the call records, pictures, we also do open source media search, Google, the emails, chat and SMS messages from their mobile phones, social media posts in CCTV. So, all these different data sources type we collect and we try to put it into a report or put it into our investigation timeline according to the facts or the complaint in order to determine the truthfulness or otherwise of an allegation. So, all these different data sources that we collect accordingly and we put it into our various findings to the team. So, the team is regularly updated. Okay, we found this, we found this particular chat message on this date, they were talking about this. Please go back to me. So, it's basically, we work hand in hand with the investigators. So, once the case is complete, then the prosecutors will be informed with our statements just to back up our findings. So, I would just like to share, these are the three extraction types for the law enforcement group. I'm not sure whether it was covered, just a bit, just want to share with you the three extracting types for especially mobile phones. These also go to prosecutors. So, for mobile phone, you can either conduct a logical extraction, file system extraction or physical extraction. And those are the things that you can pull, SMS contacts, logs, media and what you can further pull up with the other two extractions, file system extraction and physical. So, in a particular case, if you're lucky, we can get physical extraction from a phone if the forensic tool allows us. So, it allows us to get deleted data, deleted chat messages via both messenger. And that gives us further evidence or further clues on the case or even from one case, we can open up three or four more cases that could be relevant to a financial crime investigation. So, these are the concepts that we tell our investigators. Okay, sorry, we cannot get the physical. We couldn't only get a logical extraction and this is what we found. So, we have now a basic working knowledge of the extraction methods that we can do and we cannot do on a particular phone that we also inform our investigators. And this, just some of the rules of evidence that we'd like to share with you and the prosecutors would really need in court from your respective findings. Firstly, just to ensure that evidence is admissible, meaning that it was lawfully seized via search warrant or via court order or an authority under the law that allows you to seize it, maintain it and to present it. Then also, evidence has to be authentic. There is not no arguments about its originality and it has to be complete to reflect the true and whole case story. It has to be reliable, reliable in the sense that if the defense or opposing counsel hires another digital forensic examiner, the process and methods that you took, that you undertake, it has to be repeated by the examiner or from the opposing counsel. Unless it has to be believable. So, what we found and what we have extracted has to be, eventually be believed by the court. So, these are just some of the good forensic practices that we'd like to share, four main concepts. Make sure that qualified and authorized officers secure digital evidence. Sometimes a case may be overwhelming, we have only two offices and we need to do simultaneous search on four or five other venues. So, what we do is we also request our IT officers because they have been trained in extracting or collecting evidence from the site to assist us if we are overwhelmed with multiple cases or multiple venues that we have to go into. And if it's login credentials, make sure that you just provide a screenshot using a screenshot tool of a particular case where you need cloud-based email access, if it's Google or Yahoo, just to ensure that that the suspect indeed gave the passwords, lawfully obtained password for you to access that email. And the preservation, make sure that the original evidence is extracted for us. In fact, we extract, we, after extracting the device, we give it back to our registry. So, we don't work on the original device to ensure that it is only bought when it's in the dealing court. And documenting, as a university stated, you have to write a lot of things, you have to document our process and procedures so that it can help us to refresh our memory in court and presentation. Our written reports and our statements that we give to investigators and prosecutors on a case. Thank you. Excellent. It's, so this is just some of the case examples that we would like to share with the participants in the law enforcement and the lawyers and prosecutors working group. The case title is FICAC versus Langer and others. It was over a $300,000 per human fraud and $66,000 bribe case. So, what was interesting in this case is the suspects, they were working in a public department, a government department involving procurement of stationers. So, internal audit was done and they were aware that there'll be other investigated by FICAC or the police. So, what they did is they destroyed the physical evidence, the payment vouchers, the payment records that were made to the venue. So, when the investigations team came in, they could not find the digital, sorry, the physical records. So, they relied on the FMIS. So, FMIS is a financial management information system of, in Fiji, the whole of government machinery. So, government and public bodies, they use this system to make payments to respective vendor suppliers for goods and services provided. So, what the team did is reconstruct the case using digital evidence in the system, using the FMIS system. So, they were able to add 100 plus transactions from accounting sector, from the payment sector, from when the voucher was raised, the payment purchase order was made and the voucher and the checks. And we used the experts, all the officers in the public department that were familiar with the system as expert witnesses in court and they explained to the court how did the system work, which enabled us to get a successful outcome in court on this case. So, this is a particular case that we could not find documentary evidence. We had to rely on the system records of government, the financial management information system, which allowed us to reconstruct the case again using digital evidence, using electronic evidence and able to get successful conviction in court. And the last paragraph is just a court judgment that I'm putting that the witnesses gave evidence for prosecution and explained the operating of the FMIS system. So, that is the first case on, of the other four cases that I'll be just sharing to the class. Next slide. The second case is involving an official receiver, a former government official receiver. So, what he does is oversees the accounts of bankruptcy and liquidation of government. So, when a company is unable to pay their debts or when an individual is declared bankrupt, the funds are collected in court upon a court order and it builds up. So, the most interesting thing on these cases, as you can see on the screen, it was all computer. It was either Windows 98 or Windows 2000 computer. And our IT officers back then were not even sure how would we extract or how would we collect this device. So, the team left it as it is and just relied on the system itself to to see who was the only user. So, the only user that the team managed to identify was the accused himself. And the facts, the case was just over seven years, he cashed out over 1,000 transactions, which came to 4.1 million. So, what he did was create bogus emails, like example in Outlook. You just create a new email, you forward it or you receive it from your supervisor and you just edit it. Edit it saying, okay, you approve this, this is facilitated, then you print it out. When actual fact, the supervisor did not send that approval. So, he was doing that modus for the last seven years and which we managed to, again, successfully investigate and prosecute for this second case. Next slide please. The third case is a pretty straightforward case, road contract where a contractor probably forged a performance bond. So, a performance bond is just a, like a a guarantee of some that the contractor is willing to pay on a contract. So, the contractor forged the bond and he made that fraudulent bond to the government department. Through investigations, we found out that it was forged and that was the court judgment on the last, on the paragraph below the table. Next slide. And the last case is another road scam case. This case involves over $3 million, successfully convicted and prosecuted. The key evidence, digital evidence that we found was from the mobile device. Was, doing investigations on this case, for nearly half a year, we could not find out what was the bribe amount, what was the kickback amount between the company and the government official. Unless, it was until our IT team then seized the mobile device and you found out there were communications and text messages. And that was further corroborated with email evidence, extracted email evidence from the accused and the company and the computer data. Computer data in the sense of Microsoft, the Microsoft Office tools, Excel, Word and PDF. For this one, we found with the method that if you, for example, just right click on Excel file and you see properties and details, last saved by, last printed. So, for that, we managed to show the investigators and convince the court that it was the accused himself that was manipulating these claims, fraudulent claims, which totaled up to $3 million. And that was the court judgment on the last paragraph for below the table. There's never been a case in Fiji to match the gravity of this case with bribes over 100,000 given in return for $3 million. So, that is the four cases that I would like to share with your participants involving electronic evidence that we successfully investigated and prosecuted in court. Next slide please. And just to wrap up, these are some of the recommendations that from our experience that we're willing to share. If you're intending to create specialized roles in digital forensics, make sure that you are trained and certified. To know that cyber forensics and the government has did this course, it will add to your credentials because training and certification will be a key component once you give evidence as a digital forensic investigator in court. And make sure that you seize digital evidence as soon as possible, for example, CCTVs. I'm sure in Fiji, CCTVs can store only up to two weeks or even a month back. So, even if your case is reported and it takes years back, it's most hardly to retrieve CCTV. So, the sooner you handle case, make sure that you get the digital device. Make sure that your storage also is intact because digital devices, storage just keeps on growing and the storage space needs more to cater. Record keeping, we just normally document everything that we do because we can't remember every case that we're involved in from day one until court is presented. So, note keeping and record taking in our notebooks and our statements help us to refresh our memory in court. And lastly, networking. We network with our telecom and telecom and internet service providers, especially if we're locating suspects or identifying us in court records. And also networking with your fellow peers, your local, regional and foreign counterparts. Because I can confidently say, this forensics is a evolving profession. You continue, you just need to be updated to be, know the latest IT trends and tools and understand the system before you go and actually retrieve the data from that system. Thank you. Next slide. And to conclude, I'm sure you're all aware of this, the digital forensic process firstly is collection. For us, in fact, we make sure that, ensure that the devices we collect according to our standard operating procedures because it will help us in court and to preserve steps that we ensure that the original data is not in any way tainted or or was interfered by any of the investigators during the process. And analysis, we ensure that once we analyze and examine the data, it is presentable in court and our written reports with later testifying. Just to conclude, was infected with several cases that we have done, still pending involving digital forensics. And we're hoping to give evidence on the case and to develop this profession and able to share our experiences with our local and regional counterparts for the betterment of the profession. So, all in all, that concludes our presentation this morning. And thank you once again for your time and for giving us the opportunity to present digital forensics to the law enforcement and the lawyers working group.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much, Frank, for giving us a rundown of how digital evidence is managed and some really helpful case studies there to talk about. I'll just remind everyone that we're also joined by Mr. Sam Savar Mira Mira. We'll now have time for sharing of questions and experience. So, yes, I think, thank you again. Now, we'll head into a time of discussion. So, I just wondered, would anyone like to maybe share their experience or a question with Sam or anyone else here about how things work in your jurisdiction? I'll hand it over to the floor for a minute.
I'm going to jump in there.
Hi, Jeeva.
Hi. Thank you very much, Frank and Sam for the presentation. I do have a question, but I just wanted to also emphasize the importance of getting CCTV, like your evidence, really fast. Or I also experienced one of the cases with CCTV footage where we went, investigators went a few months after to retrieve that and it was already overwritten by other data. But I wanted to ask a question on the first case, am I allowed to ask questions at this time? On the first case scenario that you talked about, Frank, involving FMIS. And there was a point there where you said investigators and prosecutors had to deeply understand the FMIS. So, how Uh so how did, if you were both involved in that, how did you guys, um the investigator and the prosecutor, how did you go about doing that in order to um yeah, present your case, the electronic evidence, yeah, during the trial, I guess?
You will have to pull. Uh well, you have in this class is one of the prosecutors who actually assisted in the case, Miss Bukini. She was the one who was one in the team that did the prosecutor, uh the prosecution of the case. Uh one thing that uh one thing that we have to do always in our cases is that if uh if evidence is given to prosecutors or if evidence is given to investigators, first investigator has to understand and able to communicate whatever they have learned to the prosecutors. So that's either given through statements of the witnesses who's going to talk or the expert who's going to talk on that particular evidence. For FMIS, if you could see, it took five days for the person to give evidence on that particular process. It took five days of examination. So they had to really outline the whole process, what FMIS system is, how do you enter, uh how do you dish out passwords or the access that is given to each particular officer and what are the level of access they have and how do they approve it? Uh yeah, and that is before they go to court, they have to explain to the prosecutors in particular details, the process and procedure that is involved. So they have to sit for at least two days just to understand the system, the prosecutors themselves, before they can go and leave evidence in court. So that's what, that that is what happens in all our cases if you're dealing with systems within a particular institution. We have a case where uh the town council, they follow a different type of systems in terms of payments of rates and all these things. So when prosecutors do the, the, the lead evidence, they first have to sit with the witnesses and understand the system from the first level of approval to the last level of approval. They have to, if there is a, if there is a need to understand the inner workings of how the codes are typed in or what you need to type in to get to that particular process, the witnesses themselves or the people who actually create the system have to be there to explain to the prosecutors for them to understand, then they can go in court and leave the evidence. So that's how for this particular case of the prosecutors were able to recreate or reconstruct the whole event of documentary evidence by first understanding the process itself before going to court and lead the witness for all those days. I hope that answered your questions.
No, it does. Um thank you very much, Sam. It sounds five days for one witness fully expert evidence. Um that sounds quite, well, very of information overkill probably for, for a jury or, um how did you manage that? Like, how did you, if it was a jury trial, how, how did you, um you know, maintain or be their attention or try and and communicate that evidence in a way that, yeah?
Well, there are some, okay, so for us, it's mostly assessors, but it has been uh the assessors have been taken off from the system. Oh, but when these cases were happening, there were assessors, three of them. Uh there were times they slept. Uh because our jurisdiction deals with judge only, the judge as the final verdict on, on whatever verdict they're going to. If the assessors say not guilty, the judge has the final say. So in a way, we just need to satisfy the judge in terms of our evidence. But we always, because if assessors don't understand your case, then the judge would slightly be confused in some or many ways. But I think for this particular case, the assessors were informed in advance by the prosecutor that we're going to go through the most boring part of this case. And this is what we're going to do. We're going to construct documentation in relation to the process. Uh just bear with us as we go through this process. And that's how they went with that particular case. But some of them slept through the, so that's, I would say in this particular field, it's always, especially when you're dealing with documentation, it's very boring. Um only when there's an objection, then there's excitement. But most of the time, it's going to be hard when you're presenting this kind of documentation, especially with this volume. Uh this case went on for at least five weeks for prosecution case. Is that?
A month? Hi, it went for three months.
Went for three months?
Yeah.
So they sat in court for three months. You start at eight, sometimes you finish at nine PM. That's how they went with this.
Wow, good job. And yeah, it sounds like a, a fight I did a really good job there and thank you for for the advice.
Thank you. And it looks like we've got a question from Malachi if you would like to jump in.
I have, good morning all. Thank you, uh our presenters, uh Frank and Sam for the presentation, a very nice presentation and I would like to uh ask one question regarding the credentials. Uh my question is, are we at this stage now of the completing this uh digital fundamentals of digital foregiving? Are we now qualified to present any evidence, digital evidence in court? Uh if uh if no, then uh what sort of assistance at this level of uh our level of after completion of this, we can provide to the investigators? Uh yeah, that's the question that I would ask.
Uh hi, sorry, it's Lauren from the Attorney General's Department. I might just jump in for that question because I don't think we've spoken to Frank and Sam about uh the, the course qualification. Um thanks, Malachi. That's a really good question. We will speak to the Australian Federal Police because I understand that they supported everyone's participation in this course um as part of uh some further training and um because we're not police ourselves, we will just check with them and we can send you that advice after this session. Does that sound okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Getting evidence from, by any, any investigator. So for, for us, it's important that, as Frank has highlighted, that you have to follow what the law says in terms of getting the evidence. You have to get it lawfully. So once you have the lawful authority to, to extract something and you have the tools and you know how to operate the tools, then if you can explain these tools in court, at the end of the day, it doesn't necessarily up to the expert what to accept in court. It is the court that is, that is empowered whether to accept the expert or accept a investigator's findings. One of the examples was the three point uh the, the FRA, the, the roads scam. So Mr. Frank Toro was the financial investigator for that particular case and did all the, the works in terms of investigating the case. When he was put to understand, he had explained the process that he followed and the authority that he had in terms of investigating that case. And then the defense, they had a Queen's counsel from Australia, Australia. And they brought an expert who was, who had masters and he was a forensic investigator, forensic accountant, very well qualified in a, in, in an international firm. They brought him to court. We were able to show that his findings were in fact he lied or it was incorrect. He misled the court. And we were able to do that by Frank's evidence. So from, from our side, it does not necessarily mean that if you're an expert or if you're qualified to that extent, the court wouldn't accept your evidence. In the sense that in the jurisdiction that is small, we don't have a lot of qualification or schools that allows us to be qualified. As long as you're following the process and you have the lawful authority to do it and able to explain how you got to that conclusion, that will be sufficient. That's just a contribution from our side. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Um that's been some excellent discussion. I, I think we're slightly overdue for our break. Um but thank you for those questions, Malachi and Tupac. During the break, if you have any extra questions, feel free to post them in the chat. Um we can circle back and have a look at them in our next session. So we'll take a five minute break now. Uh but afterwards, we're gonna hear from Emma Jaber from the CDP. Uh but look forward to seeing you at ten twenty one. Um I'll pop my video back on when we're ready to start. Thank you all and thank you again Frank and Sam for that first presentation. Back to you, P. Okay, thank you for rejoining everyone. Uh let's carry on to the second portion of today's session. So I'll shortly hand over to Emma Jaber, who will speak on considerations for prosecutors to bear in mind when preparing to reduce digital evidence. However, before I hand over, I think it'd be helpful to briefly refresh ourselves on the case study. Lauren, Maria, our tech wizard will now briefly uh change slides. Now I'm gonna read out this slide just to refresh ourselves on where we're at. So Maria, fifteen, and Kai, seventeen, have been in a relationship for a few months. They met through Kai's friend Bob. One day, when Bob was hanging out with Kai at his house, Bob downloaded and installed hacking software onto Kai's laptop to capture all of his social media passwords. Now, this software was discreet, so Kai didn't notice anything. A few days later, the hacking software sent all of Kai's passwords to Bob's phone, including his Facebook password. Bob's wifi was down at home, so he went to the library to use one of their computers. Now he logged on to Kai's Facebook and pretended to be him and he messaged Maria asking for nude photos. Maria and Kai had previously exchanged nude pictures of themselves online. So Maria took some photos on her phone and sent them to Kai on Facebook Messenger. Now, once Bob received the photos on Kai's compute, on Kai's account, he uploaded them to explicit dot com, a website which illegally holds explicit sexual pictures. Explicit dot com paid Bob for providing the pictures. To ensure Kai didn't find out what happened, Bob deleted Kai's Facebook account, logged off the library computer and went home. Now, the scenario continues. The case is now proceeding to trial and the conclusions of the digital forensics examiner will form part of the prosecution's case. During the trial, the prosecutor will question the examiner as an expert witness on what his or her analysis revealed. Thank you, Lauren. So now that we've read through that case study, um for this week's scenario, the law enforcement group will be playing the role of the forensics expert preparing to give evidence as an expert witness. And for the lawyers and judges group, they'll play the role of the prosecutor, preparing to run their case in court. Now hopefully these roles aren't too unfamiliar. Now, I will now hand over to Emma and to introduce her again, she is the prosecution team leader in the Organized Crime and National Security Section at the Australian Commonwealth Director of Public Prosecution. Emma will discuss some of the issues highlighted in the CDP's practice tips included in our workbook as well. So I'll now hand over to you, Emma. Thank you for joining us.
Hi, everyone. Um I'm speaking to you today about the steps um that are taken in preparing a matter with digital evidence for trial. I've got some fairly short slides, but I'll just be talking to them um and highlighting some of the things that are in the workbook. Obviously, some of the things that I'm speaking about might be uh a little more specific to the jurisdiction in which I practice, but I hope that some of these observations will apply more broadly. So essentially, where a not guilty plea is entered and we know now that a matter is proceeding to trial, we really need to be thinking carefully about the strength of our case and, and what we can do at this point to make our case as strong as possible. So we're looking at what are the weaknesses? Do we need further evidence? And, and how do we present the evidence we have in a way that is really easy for a judge or jury to understand? So it'll apply this approach in respect of digital evidence in a bit more detail. Um the first two things that I like to look at um are attribution and continuity. So looking at attribution first, um generally speaking, unless we can connect the relevant use of a particular computer phone or device to a particular person, um it's really not much use to us in a prosecution as the evidence is only relevant and therefore admissible if we can establish this link. So at the trial prep stage, uh we're really asking the question, do we have enough evidence of attribution? And can we rule out all the other alternatives that the defense might raise? So evidence of attribution may come from both the device itself, but also from external sources. So for example, um where the device was located. So was it, was it found in the accused's bedroom? But if that's the case, what do we actually rely on to prove that that was their bedroom? So you need to sort of look at that in more detail. If it's a mobile phone, um what name is it subscribed in? And then turning to the device itself, what, what do we have on there that proves the accused was the user? And this, this is often really like a gold mine of information. So you may have email accounts, social media accounts, messages that have been sent that are consistent with the accused being the user, um photos that the accused has sent. So there might be selfies which depict them, but there might also be items in the accused's residence, particular items of clothing, tattoos. Um we have a number of matters where the police have been able to match up distinctive items or decor shown in the background of photos to an accused home, which has really been, um just really compelling evidence that the person was the user of the device and also the user at the relevant time. Uh so the next thing that I like to look at is continuity. Um so basically, we need to prove that what was seized is exactly what we're presenting as evidence and nothing is changed or been tampered with. Um often in our cases, we will look at continuity a bit before trial and we may need a few extra pieces of evidence to shore this up. But what we do find is that if you can shore up these links, um often continuity then does not end up being an issue that's in dispute and so you won't actually have to leave this evidence at trial. And this can be similar for attribution. So if, if you manage to shore up those aspects of your case in your trial preparation, it may be that you can shorten the length of your trial because you don't actually have to leave that evidence because everyone in the end agrees that those things can be proven and then you just focus on the real areas of dispute. So moving on to the types of evidence, so knowing the type of evidence you have and how you intend to rely on it is really important because this allows you to assess how it's admissible and how you're gonna argue against any challenge to the admission of that evidence. So with documentary evidence, which digital evidence often is, you need to be thinking about whether it is direct evidence of the offending or whether, or if not, and then in essence, it's hearsay. What hearsay exception are you gonna rely on to allow to be admitted in evidence? So just moving through some of the types of evidence and, and I've sort of um thought maybe an example of a, a simple offense like a bank robbery is a good way to work through this and the types of digital evidence you might have in a break. So for a bank robbery, you might have direct evidence, which is the CCTV showing the bank robbery occurring. So actual evidence of the offense. You might have circumstantial evidence. So for example, you might have found evidence on the accused's phone showing that he purchased um the balaclava shown in the CCTV two weeks earlier on eBay. You might have admissions. So you might have messages on his phone, for example, where he told someone he'll soon have the money to pay back a large debt and he would rely on that to show his, his intention. And then you might have expert evidence. So you might have evidence, for example, from an expert forensic officer who has managed to recover deleted images of the bank on the accused's phone, which shows that he was doing reconnaissance in the days before. So those are just sort of different types of evidence you have, but knowing what category it falls into helps you assess how you're gonna argue to the court that it's admissible if that's challenged by defense. To consider the issue of expert evidence in a little bit more detail, if we could go to the next slide if possible. So there's expert evidence and so looking at digital evidence more broadly. So there's expert evidence. And so looking at digital evidence more broadly, you know, there's a real spectrum of the kind of digital evidence that we'll see in a brief. So you might have something very basic, like evidence of a text message being sent to something really, really complex. For example, evidence that a particular network was accessed and particular things occurred by way of analysis of the computer logs. So in relation to the more simple and straightforward evidence, it may be that a police investigator can produce the evidence of, of a text message or very sort of basic evidence that comes off a phone because no further explanation of that evidence is needed. And, and often in our cases, we see that police OICs will do a phone download and they present it. And, and if there is no sort of real technical aspect to that, generally that evidence won't be challenged. But if, if you do need to explain technical aspects of the evidence, for example, what specific terms in the forensic report mean, how information might have been recovered, how data is to be interpreted, then you will need expert evidence generally, and that will usually come from your digital forensic officer. So just in terms of what expert evidence is, so expert evidence is admissible where it's produced by an expert who can give an opinion of specialized knowledge based on their training, study or experience. It may be that in very complex cybercrime cases, you need to get, go even further than your usual forensics witness and even seek a sort of more detailed specialized expertise. But in my experience, most digital forensic evidence is within the specialized knowledge of the police-employed forensic experts. And often those DFT offices are really well placed to tell you if the evidence that you're seeking as a prosecutor is going beyond their expertise and that you need a more specialized report. In terms of briefing an expert, just things to keep in mind. The expert obviously is independent. Their job is to impartially assist the court. In Australia, we have a particular code of conduct that the expert witness has to say that they've read and agreed to abide by. The other thing to keep in mind is that communications with the expert generally or, or could be subject to being handed over to the defense. So any communications you have with them, just it's a good thing to keep that in mind. You're not suggesting any conclusions. You're keeping everything very open and you're just asking them particular questions. But that doesn't mean you can't ask follow-up questions and, and try and clarify the evidence that they're giving. I've also mentioned their defense experts. So obviously we aren't the only ones that get experts. Defense will often get experts report. And if that's the case, you really need to think about whether that person is in fact an expert in respect of the conclusions they're making. So does their specialized knowledge actually go to what they're giving evidence about? And if not, we need to object and say that that, that's not admissible as expert evidence. However, to really support those objections, often we need to get expert evidence of our own. In terms of preparing expert witnesses for court, prior to trial, we will generally meet with all witnesses, including expert witnesses to have a conference to help prepare them if you're in court. If they haven't given evidence in court before, we'll generally talk them through the cop procedure and what will happen when they attend, that they'll give evidence in chief and then they'll be cross-examined by the defense counsel. When we have that conference, generally we will ask so many questions or clarify anything in their evidence which is not clear. If they provide any new evidence during that conference, anything that really goes beyond what they've already put in their statement, generally you'll need them to do an additional statement or at the very least you'll need to disclose that evidence to provide it to defense to tell them what additional evidence that expert's going to give. So moving on now to presenting evidence. Obviously, again, there's a real broad spectrum of digital evidence and it depends on the type of evidence. But I think, you know, as a general rule, we want to keep things as simple as possible when we're in court. So we need to remember that we're presenting to a judge or a jury who simply may not have any digital knowledge at all. And, and you can't really assume that any of the evidence is common knowledge, like you really need to prove each individual part of it. So for example, my team had an unauthorized access matter where we had to seek really the most basic expert evidence to prove the case. So it was what is an iPhone? What is an Apple ID? What is the cloud? So these things might seem like common knowledge, but they are part of the building blocks of the case and the charge. And so you have to really start at the bottom and work your way up to the more technical aspects. In terms of prevent, presenting evidence that you've obtained from a device, if it's something simple like a chat conversation, you might just use screenshots, you might convert it to a very simple table. With voluminous evidence, you really have to think about the best way to condense and to present this. So you might condense all phone records and chat messages for various co-accused into a chronological table, which will give you an overall picture of what was going on in a syndicate for a particular day. And you might add in things like location data, surveillance evidence to show where people were at the time when particular communications are being sent. So I mean, from our perspective, the volume of digital evidence collected in our briefs now can often seem a bit overwhelming. But if you take the time to properly sort of digest it and present it, it really provides this unique and comprehensive picture of a person's movements and their communications at a particular time, which can be really vital to your case that you're presenting. Now I will note that unless defense agree to all the contents of that summary, you still need to reduce the underlying evidence that you have in that summary through the respective witnesses. But having that overarching summary can be of great assistance to everyone to help understand the case. There's, there's two benefits to preparing these summaries and to really preparing them probably ahead of time, even when you're first assessing the evidence, because the first is it gives you a really good handle on the evidence and it makes it much easier for you to run your case. The second benefit is that where this evidence is compelling and really insurmountable, it, it often convinces the accused to plead guilty. So we like to sort of frontload the preparation of this kind of summarized digest material. Often at the start of a case is it, it really may mean you don't need to go to trial at all. Just as a final note, I noted dealing with sensitive evidence. So in general, sensitive material will not be included in the brief itself and won't be served on defense, but it is made available for inspection and that, that's generally how these matters proceed. If the content of that material is disputed, this evidence then does need to be let at trial and it is a very difficult issue to deal with. We find in our practice almost inevitably, the defense will agree to a summary rather than the actual evidence being put before a jury. And, and depending on the nature of the issue, whether or not that's appropriate will depend, but o- often that's an easier way to do it. If you do in fact have to tend to sensitive evidence, it's good to think about limiting the number of copies that you might want to have in the court and ensuring that at the end of the case that all the copies are returned to the investigators. So those are some tips for sensitive evidence. That really concludes the things that I wanted to speak through today. So I'll now hand back to A G D.
Many thanks, Emma. Thank you for that presentation. Well, now is the time for our breakout session to progress to the final leg of our case study. And our presenters will be available today in the different breakout rooms. But before we break out, we read through the case study a few moments ago and we just have one question to resolve before we did that. You may recall that back in session one, the breakout rooms took slightly different approaches to charges they wanted to take forward. In particular, one group only wanted to progress two of the four possible charges, while the other group wanted to proceed with all four. So our tech wizard Lauren will now display the conduct that was relevant to each offense on the screen. There we go. So please, please just assume just for the purposes of this breakout session that the investigators decided to investigate just two of the offenses, illegal access and computer-related fraud. Now, for the purposes of today's breakout rumors, assume that the digital forensic analyst and the investigator have finalized their report. And now they've handed that over to the prosecutor who has decided to proceed with both charges against Bob. Now here comes time for the splitting into breakout rooms. Hopefully this works. So we're now going to have about a thirty minute discussion today. For the law enforcement group, you're going to be preparing to give evidence as an expert witness. And there'll be a few key questions for you. What does the evidence demonstrate in relation to this case? What does it not demonstrate or is not able to demonstrate? For example, where would the prosecutor need to rely on other evidence? Thirdly, where would you need to use a digital forensic technique to obtain the data and how would you explain this to the court? And then finally, what do you think the prosecutor will ask you? We'll have two scribes, myself as well as Mariana. So no need to worry about that. It's just a conversation. And then for the lawyers and judges group, you'll be the prosecutor running the case. And there's three key questions. One, what does the digital evidence demonstrate in your case against Bob? Question two, what do you need to ask the expert witness? How do you prepare them? In question three, how will the defense seek to challenge the digital evidence you have induced? All those questions will be in the document that will be screen shared in those breakout rooms. So no need to have memorized all that. But we'll now assign you to breakout rooms and hopefully this works. Okay. Hi, everybody. It's Nick here again. Thanks for coming back to the main area. I think we've got most people. Because of time issues, we might just have a very, very quick overview from each group. And then a comment from Emma as well as Frank. So starting with group one, which was the prosecutors, would someone from that group like to briefly talk about some of the key ideas that came out against the questions for that group? I'm not sure if you've nominated someone or if I'm putting someone on the spot. There you go. All right. Looks like we've got Lauren joining us.
Hi, everyone. So apologies, my scramble at the start did delay us a little bit. But we spent some time recapping the evidence that we discussed in relation to the last session. Some of the evidence in the library about Bob accessing the computer was quite relevant as well as evidence of the financial benefit that he obtained. And then second was, and then in relation to illegal access, we discussed some of the practicalities around making mutual assistance requests and looking at explicit dot com and what evidence they may be able to provide. And in terms of looking at expert witnesses to support some of the evidence, Emma made the point that you do need an expert, you need a witness in relation to all of your evidence. And we talked through some of the difficulties around CCTV evidence as well. And in particular, some of the things that the defense might pick on relate to attribution of particular acts to Bob.
Awesome. And Emma, did you want to add anything to what you sort of heard and contributed to in that session?
I just, I, I thought it was a really useful discussion in terms of, you know, the, everyone was pretty alive to what the weaknesses were in the evidence and what sort of things we would need. But also was sort of pretty proactive and strategic about some ways that we might be able to get evidence. For example, from Facebook that we wouldn't, you know, we might struggle to get under a mutual assistance request, but other ways we might get it from some of the witnesses in proceedings. It's just would be really useful for prosecuting the matter.
Yeah. Thank you, Emma. I might just briefly mention some key points from our session and then ask if Malachi would like to add anything. So we talked about, let me just jump over to my notes. We briefly looked at question one and, and said that the data may be vast as to, you know, the evidence we have and connecting it with Bob. So having an investigator present with the digital examiner can really help. Sam made a really good point that as sort of expert evidence, sorry, as evidence experts, we can really attest to the existence of the data, but not the truth of the data and only the maker of the data can attest to that. We thought the evidence was mostly circumstantial. And Sam mentioned that the deletion of the Facebook account creates a goldmine of evidence, particularly with computer-related fraud and it in part speaks to the culpability of the suspect. We, we've had some thoughts about what it doesn't demonstrate and that the prosecutor might need to rely on the contributions of other witnesses, including the librarian as well as CCTV and experts on software, knowledge on how software operates on a computer. And we made the point that if you can use software to steal someone's password, you can also use software to frame somebody. So from a defense counsel's point of view, you'd really closely scrutinize the software itself and maybe underplay Bob's know-how. Now, questions three and four very briefly. We talked about how, how the importance of evidence collection, ensuring that the underlying data hasn't been tampered with. We talked about keeping in mind that the court will be looking at the evidence for the very first time, even though you might have been looking at that evidence for weeks or months in advance. And that actually creates a lot of pressure to present that work to the court. And then finally, what do you think the prosecutor will ask you? Now, we mentioned that sometimes presentation slides can be used. You, you might be asked about identifying the wrongdoer using the evidence as well as the process of extraction and preservation. So there was a lot we talked about and I wondered if Malachi, you wanted to add anything before I ask Frank for any comments?
Sure, you can move on to asking.
That's good. Thanks, Malachi. Frank or Sam, did you have any comments having talked about those things as a group?
Just a brief look in how the discussion had worked. It's good that I've seen that the discussion is on the right track, they're asking the right questions in terms of trying to prove the offense. What are the methods of obtaining evidence and what evidence do they need, whether it's circumstantial or direct, direct or circumstantial evidence? So in general, it's, it's really good for us to sit and observe and, and make comments on what we will do or what we cannot do. Looking at just in relation to the scenario, in, in terms of when you are investigating or preparing for the case or other important factor that you have to look into is what are the likely defense? And what are the methods or likely methods that they're going to use in trying to create doubt within the evidence, not in the case as a whole, but in its individual evidence that they're going to present in court? Thank you.
Thank you. Well, um, thanks everyone for your contributions. The scribing of what was said will be circulated as well later. So you'll be able to draw upon that as reference material. Well, that, that brings us to the end of this session. So I really want to thank our presenters Frank, Sam and Emma for joining us today, giving us your time, energy and expertise. Sessions like this really aren't possible without your help. So I, I really want to thank you for that. And although unfortunately we haven't been able to meet in person as we would in previous years, I, I really hope you found this material constructive. Hopefully it's been an opportunity to think about some issues for the first time and revisit how you do things as well as think about new possibilities for how evidence is handled and the interactions between prosecutors and police. Now, thank you everyone for joining today and for your contributions over the last three sessions. We, we hope you're enjoying the course, the workbook. And we look forward to celebrating this whole course with you at the certificate ceremony at the end of November. So in the meantime, please take care and don't forget to stay in touch with us in the, in the next few weeks. And thank you all again for joining us. Well, have a good afternoon, everybody.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.